Good morning, we'll call the meeting to order for the day. First item is approval of today's agenda.
We'll move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the agenda, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carries. Citizens to be heard, well we have some citizens, but they want to wait to be heard I think here, so, okay, approval payment of bills and vouchers.
Move to approve.
Second. Motion and a second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carries. Julie, request to replace full-time corrections officer, good morning.
Good morning. Well, we have one of our full-time corrections officer going to the city of West Fargo as a police officer, so I'm requesting that we replace his position, it is part of the staffing plan the U C has given us, there will be a minimal cost savings, he was a relatively new employee, he wasn't even here a year, of about $2,000 for the 2016 budget.
Move to approve.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas.
Happy holidays, yeah.
Merry Christmas.
Okay, approval of courthouse roof project, Joe, good morning Joe.
I just wanted to update you on this project, you guys had approved it, the go-ahead of this sometime, I think it was in the summertime, and we started this project early fall, October, and it took about six weeks, project went well, had a few little bumps in the road, but other than that it went real well, it's complete, and I wanted just to note too that we got into the project and we added a bypass to the system, so we're allowed to keep the system up and running, this is the loop for the heating and cooling, the main system, just so you know, and we had to add an additional bypass to it, this will allow us to maintain the system a little bit better, but that additional cost was $4,487, so we have a total project cost of $49,185, and I would request to pay out of on 13.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion, any questions for Joe on this? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carries, thank you Joe.
Thank you.
West Central Regional Juvenile Center, Steve, request to source the bids for juvenile roof project, see, we've been pretty easy on the first two Steve, I don't know if you're...
Well, we could have a new shower system in our place, I guess. We've been watching our roof at the juvenile center for a number of years, and this fall, and working with Joe, Joe had two commercial roofers come in and assess the roof, and both of the companies determined that the roof was in need of replacement, part of that assessment was we then requested quotes from them, and we received the two quotes that ranged between $63,000 and $82,000 for the cost of the project, and so we would be requesting that, we'd be allowed to place an ad for bids for that project. The second part would be is in the event that this board would approve that, the total cost of the project is split between the secure and the non-secure program, which the secure budget's responsible for 67% of that project, which we have capital improvement funds to cover that, we would be here today to request 33% of that project, that would be taken from building fund 13 also, which based on the quotes would be between $20,000 and $27,000.
Questions for Steve, are Joe on this, gotta do it.
At fund 13, is that still in good, you still got funds in there?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I feel that that certainly does have adequate funds to cover that, and this will come out of next year instead of this year as well, so we'll add another $100,000 after the first of the year, so.
Move to approve this project.
Second the motion.
Motion and second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carries. Request to replace one full-time juvenile counselor position.
We recently had a full-time counselor, accepted a job as a probation officer in Monoman County, and we would be requesting that we be allowed to replace that position as part of our staffing plan in the 2016 budget, based on calculations, we would be looking at saving roughly $79,000 by replacing someone at the entry level position.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second, I don't know, this is going pretty fast for Steve. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carries.
It's a Christmas miracle.
Yeah, yes, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you Steve. Approval of, Rhonda's not here, oh that's first, so, okay, let's do some committee reports, Wayne.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, on Saturday, December 12th, for Lake Agassy Regional Library, Northern Lights Library Network full board meeting, general business, we went over the financials and all was in good order, went over several different areas that the network is involved in throughout the 23 counties, we discussed the upcoming library luncheon with legislators that will be held in Moorhead, at Moorhead's Minnesota State University Moorhead in February, then we had reports from all libraries and counties represented at the meeting, and that is the extent of my report.
Thank you. Frank?
No report.
Jenny?
No reports.
Last Friday, we met Subcommittee of the Solid Waste, met with the city of Moorhead, representatives of the city of Moorhead staff, to have further discussions regarding the grant application for the transfer station and the household hazardous waste, and we wanted to make sure that we're on the same page in terms of ownership, how that's going to work, and I think we'll be coming forward with more information on that in the near future, recommendations, but it appears on both parts that Clay County will actually receive the grant and therefore own the facility, and Moorhead will probably be providing the land for it.
Who did you talk to? We met Thursday, so you have the week before too.
Oh, yeah, yeah, and I do, and I apologize for being gone Thursday, but I don't think anybody would have wanted to catch what I had by being here, so, the week before we'd, I did, as Jenny mentioned, we did, I had the Clay County Joint Powers, and I would assume Jenny, you gave a report on that one, so, and then we did, Grant, did you give a report on our meeting with Chisago County, it would have been a week before, but we had...
I think we did, yeah.
Okay, Brian, maybe you gave an update on that?
Yeah, we both.
Okay, then I don't need to get into that, and then this morning there was a PIC meeting, and it went over, well you'll be hearing about it today, but the 2016 furlough and some COLA numbers and prediums that we're going to be establishing for 2016, and that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I had the Solid Waste meeting, Kevin reported on in the PIC meeting, what Darren will be giving us some information on, so, that was it for me, Brian, what do you have for us?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair, yeah, we had extensive discussion with the city in reference to location, and that's already been touched on, the PIC meeting was this morning, and I do believe Darren will be bringing that to the board next week though, of all the end-of-the-year issues, reference renewal of the furlough policy and the prediums for, you know, out-of-county travel and different things along those lines, so, pretty much end-of-the-year updating stuff. Did have a administrative advisory diversion meeting yesterday to touch on some of the issues, one was to review the budget that will be reviewed with the six entities this morning at 11:30, there is a meeting, and you're all invited to that, assuming you received the invitations, to talk about the 2016 budget, and by the way, that will be coming to Clay County Board, it'll be on our agenda for your consideration on December 22nd, and there may be some news by that time to reference the federal dollars, if they've been included in the budget or not, the, might be a little bit of discussion, but Steve and I have talked about, and yesterday we engaged Georgia in some conversation reference, juvenile space, and there'll be certainly more to discuss down the road, the family service center spaces as well, what we heard from this board last week, or Thursday night, was the fact that Lakes and Prairies is planning on, they have put a down payment on some property, and if that does go forward, that will free up an awful lot of space in a family service center, so we need to start talking about how we're going to fill that, or what will happen there, so it'd be nice if we secure some more validation as to that moving forward. I have had a couple conversations with some construction companies already, reference the RFQ, their request for qualifications for a construction manager that you approved last Thursday night, so I think that's going to go ahead terribly well, and been a lot of catch-up, I guess we were out a couple days last week with AMC at the beginning of the week, and so lots of phone calls and different things returned, so, Mr. Chair, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Yeah, I guess we can do adopt the levy and approve the budget, you want to wait?
Mr. Chair, if I may, we may want to wait till the scheduled time for that, just in case there's interest.
Darren, were we going to do those PIC items?
That's next Tuesday.
Oh, that's next Tuesday, okay, so, well, we'll take a break for about five minutes, so. We'll call the meeting back to order. Next item on our agenda is approval of provider agreement with Health Partners to provide provision of services, social services director Rhonda Porter, good morning Rhonda.
Good morning. You're a little ahead of schedule today. Okay, I believe you did get in your board packet just a one-page summary of this contract, if you recall this last year, this is connected to the re-procurement that we went through with the health plans this last year, you know, we've had the three health plans, Medica, U Care, and Blue Plus, starting in January, that will change, we will have Blue Plus and now Health Partners, so this contract is to start that relationship in January, not only will they serve our folks coming in applying for medical assistance or Minnesota Care, but this contract relates to the work that we do, so some of the services we provide, we can bill Health Partners for, so this contract would allow us to do that, similar to the other health plans. So the services that would be involved in this contract, the first two involve public health, and Kathy is here if there's any questions, but it's for car seat education and car seat equipment, and they're involved in that education and distribution, and then for social services, but also for detox, we can bill Health Partners for chemical health assessments that we do, and the last piece is mental health case management, so we can bill Health Partners for intake and eligibility determination as well as case management, and we provide mental health case management at our office on a smaller scale, Health Partners will contract with our providers, our community providers as well, but we do provide some of those services at the county level. So I sent this, it's, I'm not sure if you got this in your packet, but it's a several-page contract, and we think Steve has had a chance to review it as well, if there's any questions.
Everything's good Steve?
Yeah, it's all fairly standard, probably the one takeaway is if you want to do business with Health Partners and get reimbursed through their insurance, you sign their contract, there really isn't much, there isn't anything of concern there, or really anything that's particularly negotiable, I will just note the contract dispute, contract dispute resolution portion, it calls for arbitration, binding arbitration in Minneapolis, or a mutually agreed upon location, I just note that if a dispute arises under this reimbursement rates, or whether something is covered service, to the extent anyone wants to fight it, that's how and where it'll be fought.
Okay. Any other questions for Rhonda on this?
How were we being reimbursed before on this, if they had Health Partners, did they have to pay themselves, or what?
Well, Health Partners wasn't, we didn't have a contract with them, so we weren't billing Health Partners, but they were not a provider of the prepaid medical assistance plan in Clay County, they're starting now in January of 2016, so this will be a new provider for our recipients in our county starting in January, but the other health plans that we've had a relationship with, we've had similar contracts and we bill them for these services.
I mean, those that had Health Partners before in Clay County, how did they pay? Did they pay themselves, or?
Well, if they had Health Partners, it would have been through private insurance, it would not have been through the county contract, so we've not billed Health Partners.
Any other questions for Rhonda? Are the board's wishes?
I'm waiting for them.
I'll second the motion.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carries, thanks Rhonda.
Thank you.
Dave Overbow, good morning Dave.
Good morning. First item is approval of Elkton Township roadway agreement, and what this is, we don't do these very often, but every once in a while there's a little extra work that might, we feel should be done in order for the expenditures of county money or township money, most recent case, I guess, was a fairly sizable bridge we did for Eglin Township, and there was some agreement between Eglin and the city of Holly, and we wanted to make sure that if we replaced this structure with an actual bridge, that there was some roadwork that was done, and it got done according to the agreement, and the agreement basically just states our development code, road dimensional policy, so to speak, so 24-foot of road top, four-to-one end slopes, and that sort of thing, just to make sure that, you know, if it's something that we would maintain with our maintenance contract that would be eligible for that, so Elkton Township has a structure that's been kind of out of service for a while, I thought the actual bridge itself was the problem, but the bridge isn't, I mean, the bridge is deficient and it needs to be replaced, but the actual main problem is there's been, some of the roadway was washed out, it's in a low area, it's about a mile or so east of Downer, and it's on the north side of Clay County 10, or actually, I'm sorry, south side of Clay County 10 there, and we've had it on our township, our five-year resolution township replacement list as the elimination, but the township feels that it's a good cut across road for the south side of Clay County 10 to get over to Highway 9, and there's some farm traffic that uses it, so they wished us to replace it, we met with the state aid engineer, Merle, early this summer, and he said he would support it, but they do need to make those road improvements, so we put together the roadway agreement stating a minimum of two years they have to replace, or not replace, but to build the road up and make it according to our standards, we gave it to the township, we've had several discussions with them, and they brought it to their board and approved it, so I just thought I'd bring it to this board, and basically just make sure that they follow up, I guess, and I don't see any issues with it.
I'll move to approve the Elkton Township roadway agreement.
I'll second, Mr. Chair, is this been through private tracking committee, Kevin?
I don't, this one did not, no?
It didn't have to.
Didn't need to. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carries. Next item Dave, approval of out-of-state travel.
Yeah, it's, that time of year, I guess, I would like to go back to the National County Engineers Conference, there's about a month period here I have before the early bird discount period is over, last year I didn't attend the national conference, it was in Florida, this year it's in Washington, Minnesota has a good following, a good delegation, I feel it's a worthwhile cause, there's just a lot of different breakout sessions that you can get kind of a national perspective on the county engineering, it's a very, very good way to network, as well as there's always equipment, different equipment vendors and things there that, I guess it's always good to kind of keep an eye on what's current in our industry.
Move to approve.
Second. Motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carries, there you go Dave, thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks Dave.
Okay, well, still a little early Brian, do you want to, I think we should wait a little bit, or?
Yeah, probably should.
Yeah, maybe we'll, since it's a budget approval, we'll wait a few minutes, we'll take a break for a moment, so, are we ready to go again?
Let's move on to Mark.
Okay, we'll call the meeting back to order, and the next item is to adopt the 2016 levy and approve the budget for 2016. Brian Bergen, Lori Johnson, good morning.
Well, good morning, Mr. Chair and members of the commission, I feel like we've gone through this budget and the levy that we're going to ask you to consider today quite a bit over the last six months, you did have a public hearing on it, or a public meeting the last Thursday night, and I think the feedback from the meeting and from you folks in that meeting, we have not changed the levy request at all, in fact, you set your preliminary levy back in September, and we cannot go up from there, we can only reduce the levy, and it appears like that will be staying the same, but that's your decision to make. What we do have also, there is a resolution, and we can get to that, where it talks about the levy and the budget, but the official budget for 2016 is also attached, and if we want to just spend a minute or two going through the different funds that are related on that, you'll see that the general fund, it is comparing the 2015 budgeted dollars of revenues, and then the expenses down there at the bottom to 2016, so just for simplicity's sake, if you want to take a look at those columns, it kind of shows where the revenue is going to come from, for a total revenue of $21,912, $912,258, and then your total expenditures down there of $22,963,400, and you can see that you are utilizing expenditures, I have to be so careful how I word this, that you're utilizing, or you're relying on some reserves or collected monies, revenues over expenditures from last year or whatever to cover that, now you may or you may not need that million dollars out of your fund, but that's what you are, that's how you're budgeting, just to make that, make you well aware of that, that that, the revenue is not exactly meeting your expenditures for next year, you're relying on some reserve funds, some dollars that have been collected to cover that, and I think you're all aware that you're willing to do that, so just want you to make you well aware of that, and road and bridge, you can see there, and that really varies, I know it looks like you're spending $4 million less next year, and you are, but you remember you had bonding money that was coming in from the bonds that you were spending for projects, so.
I got one, before we move on the road, Rich, I'm going to channel the fund, I know it's a minor item, but why do we feel with licenses and permits are going to be less this next year than it was the year before?
Oh...
About $3,000 less.
Yeah, I see that.
It's minor, it's very minor.
For sure we've got one less liquor license, so that's $2,200 right there.
Okay.
And so, I mean, if you look at the difference there, that's about it, so.
And Mr. Chair, that's not motor vehicle license that you're talking about.
Oh, excuse me?
Yeah, that comes under, under...
Sorry.
Charges for services.
I thought it was a small amount there, it just...
No, that's understandable.
It just didn't look right, excuse me, thank you.
So road and bridge, you'll see that balances out at the $12,761,000 that they collect from different funds, most of it is pass-through funds, or a lot of it is pass-through funds from the state, you assess probably about $3.5 million, I think, on the local levy goes towards the highway fund. Social services, that's a big expenditure, it's about $17 million, $17,831,000, and you'll notice down there the expenditures of $18,031,000, so we are, their reserves are pretty adequate, so we're relying about $200,000 out of reserves for, to balance that line item budget, and remember that your out-of-home placements, we've talked a lot about that, and Rhonda asked for an increase in that, this year we're bouncing around $3 million on out-of-home placement funds, and that is an educated guess what it's going to cost you next year, that's tough to determine exactly what that is, let's hope that can be enough. Building fund, that's building somewhat, because we are putting that 50, extra $50,000 in there, I think, Lori, that we're assessing for the jail payments. Juvenile detention is another fund, I'd like to say that is an enterprise fund to some degree with our secure building, two-thirds of our expenses are shared amongst the various counties, and the non-secure is totally on the Clay County's back, and we do charge other counties when they are, when we're asked to hold kids in there for the non-secure, but the secure unit, and just to make everybody aware, that is shared by the 11 counties, and you can, that's a breakdown in things, so, county building, major improvements, we put $100,000 in there every year, and we mentioned that earlier when Joe was in about the roof, that we'll be taking some of those dollars, or you obligated some of those dollars, and that's part of our capital improvement plan, and it seems to be working out really well. Debt service, that's pretty well self-explanatory, that's the debt that we have out there right now, we'll be talking more about that as we go along through the year, when we talk about financing for the jail operation, and then if we look at the solid waste, and if that needs to be bonded for, we'll be talking about that, the juvenile center, people have enough maybe funds to look at the juvenile center, but we've got lots of things that need attention. Public health, on the second page, you normally use the revenues in excess of expenditures from the year before, and that's what we did again this year, and it was substantial for 2016, you'll see $503,000 down on the bottom. Solid waste fund, we expect to spend some dollars out of the solid waste fund this year because that's an expanding project, plus we got some grant money from the state of Minnesota too in regards to that. Internal service fund for replacement of equipment, Lori added a little bit of money to that this year again, but that is really, I hadn't seen that in any other counties, and I guess when you talk to people even at the conference and things about our internal service fund, what a good idea, again, we talked about that just this week, I don't know who came up with that, if Lori did or whatever, but it's a... I don't know who came up with that, if Lori did or whatever, but it's a.
That was a VJ.
That was a VJ.
Yep.
That was really a good idea. Really a good idea to be putting money away. Family service center, and Lori mentioned this during the Thursday night, our truth in taxation, a lot of that is depreciation that is a big figure in that. That's a change, but that's the operations too. But there is a $300.
Actually took that out.
You took that out now?
Just because it's not relevant to the levy, so.
Okay.
The depreciation.
Very good. And then you have your two columns of total. I know that looks like you're spending a lot of money out of your reserves to cover that, but they come out of different funds for different reasons and we feel that it's a safe budget for next year, one that increases the levy 5.66% over the year before and you had 1.8% growth. So you're netting out probably about, what did that be, about four? Just, yeah, about 3.8% increase in your net levy. So if there aren't any questions, I'd refer you to the resolution.
I have one question quickly. From the presentation from Julie last week, those unanticipated will come on the revenues.
Correct. Yes.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, Brian, the amount that we're now putting in annually is $200,000 for capital for jail?
I think for 50 per year. Yeah, for three years.
But for 16, will it be up to $200,000 now?
$150. It shows 200 because we normally and have for years and years, set aside $50,000 for paint and carpeting.
Okay, for other things.
For other things.
So the 200 and 150 in 2016 will be.
150.
Okay. I just want to just keep that in mind moving forward when we take a look at all of the investments we're currently doing versus how we can.
Okay. Yeah. All right. And that was something, well, I guess it was probably three years ago that the board decided they would start setting aside $50,000 to kind of build that up.
Okay.
So it's not such a.
No, I know, I guess at some point in time though, I think we're going to have to come up with some. That's going to go away when we get into a financing structure that's different, so. Well, let's hope anyway that.
Yeah, there you go.
Okay, any other questions for Lori or Brian?
No. Mr. Chair, the resolution that you have before you does ask for approval of the levy or I should say certifies the levy and then also approves the 2016 budget request. So we feel that with the approval of this one resolution, you're approving the levy and the budget as well.
Levy and the budget, okay. So the resolution is 2015-41, whereas the Clay County Board of Commissioners that hold a public meeting on December 10th, 2015, and whereas the Clay County Board of Commissioners has addressed the concerns of the citizens to the best of their ability and be it resolved that the Clay County Board of Commissioners hereby certifies the following levy for taxes to be collected in 2016 and the total is $27,635,435. Be it further resolved that the Clay County Board of Commissioners hereby adopts the 2016 budget as presented. Do we have a motion?
I'll move to approve the budget as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I want to comment. Brian, thank you for your work on this and to all of our department heads. I think when we first started this, I was, we as a board in our original proposal saw some rather high numbers. I think they were in double-digit numbers, proposed increases and to, through a lot of work on your part and the part of our supervisors to get this down to where it was, it's, you know, I think, I was unable to be here Thursday night, but I think the commissioners that were here also did hear, you know, some of the public's thoughts on where taxes are going and I think keeping that in mind, you know, a 5.66 and you take the growth that we have and that brings that down, but what we need to do to maintain a good workforce here and the fact that we have escalating health insurance costs that are kind of in a great degree out of our control, I think we, you guys have done a really good job and I want to compliment you on that and I'm going to support the budget.
Yes, great work by the staff on this. So I think the, Kevin's point is right. There are a lot of things that are difficult to deal with that the staff has to address the, like everybody else, the rising cost of health insurance. We've got major issues to deal with costs with our jail and we have major issues with children at risk. There are a lot of things that are becoming more and more expensive to deal with, so thanks for the great work. Any other issues? All in favor of the motion? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same side. Motion carries. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair, and we do appreciate that, those comments, but the department heads did do a very good job and I really want to thank Lori and Vicki for working on this with me. It would have been helpful, but this is your budget. You folks give us the direction and allow us to work within those parameters and we sat here several times saying, where do we want to go? And you guys said that and you represent the people in that. We know that and so compliment yourselves. I think this was a good budget. It was a good process and we're here, so we'll see where it goes. Thank you.
Thank you.
In light of what we were just, I agree with Kevin in saying what our supervisors have done, you know, and following up on that, I would just like to make a motion. I think, I don't know, I feel that we should also contribute to this thing. I'd like to make a motion to reduce our per diem from $100 to $75. A second or not.
Without a second, I can't go.
All right, any comments? Okay. No second on that, so.
Well, I, you know, now that the, I just, the perdiems are all part of our discussion. Is it at the next meeting or the first meeting in January that we?
No, next meeting.
Next meeting. And, you know, originally when that, just for point of conversation, when that was voted on to go up, I voted against that. But in the same regard, you got to know the back of the history and back in the history of it was, was there was also some areas where we declined other things or didn't take other things, so there's a.
I just, I don't have a feeling, I'm just, oh, we can discuss it or not. I'm just saying that our supervisors have done a lot of stuff trying to get things.
Something to think about our perdiems too and, you know, $100 is a lot of money, but when you have one meeting where you have to travel 250 miles to get there and you can have as much windshield time as anything. And then you can also have another instance where in some of my committees, I can spend, I can have three or four different committee meetings in one day and you're restricted to just the one per diem. So, you know, I think when you bring that up from a public perspective, it's great to say, well, okay, well, we're going to do our part, but same point in time, I don't think the public should expect any commissioners or anybody else to be working for fractions on the dollar for the time involved and, you know, so. But we can have that discussion when we set the perdiems, but I just wanted to give you a little history on why it was what it was.
Any other issues before the board today? Brian, anything else for us? Steve, anything?
No.
Are there none? One more is here.